Ladies and gentlemen, I am the Speaker. I would like to introduce the President of the United States of America, the Republic of which is Spanish, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Now, before you amend the agenda for the evening's meeting, are there any additions or corrections to either the consent agenda or the regular agenda? Hearing none. We'll work first with the consent agenda. Those in favor of the matters listed, the six matters listed on the consent agenda.
Motion for proof.
Second. Moved by Michael Piazzo, seconded by Pamela Balson. Those in favor, please indicate by standing in line. Motion here. As to the regular agenda, if there are motions for proof, bring them on. Second. Moved by Pamela Balson, seconded by Michael Piazzo. Those in favor, please indicate by standing in line. That's opposed. Motion here. Each has its own court of view. The hearing's on our agenda this evening. The first of which, Victoria Bailey will lead us into the discussion of the Chatham Park Water Reclamation Facility and then open it for -- there are several people signed up to speak on this particular public hearing.
Okay. Chatham Park Investors has proposed to construct a water reclamation facility along U.S. Highway 64 business, just west of U-Banks -- just west of the U-Banks Road intersection. The subject parcel is located in the Chatham Park PDD, within 500 feet of an exterior boundary. The Chatham Park Master Plan states that for land uses allowed in Chatham Park that are identified as special use permit only in the town zoning ordinance, when proposed within 500 feet of a perimeter boundary, shall include proposed perimeter boundary transition treatment with the required site plan application. In these cases, the town's review of the site plan and the perimeter boundary transition treatments shall include a public hearing. The town of Pittsburgh zoning ordinance identifies a water reclamation facility as a use which requires a special use permit, and as the proposed site is within 500 feet of an exterior boundary, review of the site plan must include a public hearing. The west side of this parcel requires a 50-foot type A buffer, which is an opaque buffer, according to the Chatham Park Landscaping Ordinance. This buffer requirement will be met using existing vegetation and sublimating where needed. Staff finds that the proposed perimeter boundary transition treatment meet the requirements of the Chatham Park Master Plan and landscape ordinance. Staff recommend sending the site plan to planning board for review and recommendation following the hearing.
Thank you. Here we have Brian Blake and Jeremy Kennedy from Kinga Creek. Did you all want to delay speaking until after the members of the public, or would you like to go ahead and speak?
Yes, ma'am. We would like to delay until after members of the public.
The next person signed up is Linda Cisco. If you'll come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Good evening, everybody. Y'all don't respond when you say good evening. Thank you very much. I'm Linda Cisco, and I live at 604 Mrs. Chapel Church Road, Pittsburgh, North Carolina, and had some concerns and questions about just what Chatham Park wants to do and why it is affecting me and my family. Now, as I understand this, what they're saying here in this letter is that some of the property that belongs to my family and myself, they want to use it for some type of blind sewage water. I really need clarification, you know, because the wording sometimes is -- and these communiques are offensive a little bit to me because they -- I'm not a layman of this terminology. Therefore, I find myself full of just questions. Why is my land even being looked at for sewage and water line? I really don't understand that. I do understand that I think -- I may not be true -- that if you run a sewage line through somebody's land or adjacent to somebody's land, it's probably going to cause the property value to be changed. I don't think that people in general, particularly people that are not very wealthy, should have to be affected in this way by folk that are very wealthy. Chatham Park has all kinds of land. I mean, how many acres of land does Chatham Park have already? And of all of those acres, the question to me is, can't they find acreage on land that they already own to run the sewage line? I think they can if they really wanted to. I just feel like that not only is this an inconvenience to my family, but it's just an injustice as well. So, I'm here, if I'm understanding this correctly, I'm here to say to this commission and the mayor that when you look at this, I hope that you would look at it and say no. Because just for -- just because they don't or shouldn't have a right to -- this is a -- it's not a community that wants my land. It's a private group of folk. They want it for their benefit, and they -- that's the way I see it. So, I don't think that they should be allowed to do this to me, my family. So, my -- as I said, my hope is that you would say no. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Miss Cisco, I'm sure your land located in reference to this dollar.
This is the map right here, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you know I'm not very good with this, but maybe if I could tell you, you could tell us. The land I think that they are referring to is, it's in the name Sarah Woodson. That's my great -- that's my aunt. And it's like, it runs -- it's right -- you know what San White store is?
Yes, ma'am.
You know where the Villa Tom is?
Mm-hmm.
Right across -- it's adjacent to the Villa Tom. That's where it is, right over the other side of the Villa Tom.
On the same side of the street?
The Villa Tom is on this side.
On the north side.
My family's land is on the other side. It's adjacent to Villa Tom. And then, the other land, the other 77 acres that we have, okay, 76 acres, is down a little further on 64.
How about see?
Victoria? I don't remember looking at the property name. Is there any other side of U-Banks Road?
Mine is before you get to U-Banks Road.
Yeah, it's to the west of this property.
U-Banks already sold here to Dehers and Chatham Park. Mine is adjacent to U-Banks. We bought it. Second. Does that help you out?
I'll have to say no, to be honest with you.
I'm sorry.
But I do know where Mr. White's store is down there. But I guess I should ask Chatham Parkers, does this reclamation facility involve this land here?
No, sir. We're about a half mile down the creek from this piece of property.
That's the 77 acres that down the road from my aunt Sarah's, they're not down the road from. That's where they -- I think that's where the letter that I received came in reference to that 14, that 14 acres. Is that not right? Yeah, so it is. It is. He didn't quite tell you the whole information. Yes, yes. Tell us the name of the property listed on there. Sarah, it's probably, it's in the name of Sarah Woodson, I think. Sarah Woodson. Sarah Wambow Woodson. Wambow Woodson. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
So, can we get some clarity? Because Cisco is concerned that what is before the board tonight is something to do with a sewer line on her property, and this has nothing to do with that. This is the first inclination I've got, that there's any sewer encroachment on your property. That's not part of this application tonight? It's not included here?
Well, it was a part of the letter that I received. I got a letter saying that. So, I don't know why you would send me a letter if my land was not a part of it. So, if you made a mistake, that's okay. I'm glad.
And if you want to call me, I'll give you my card, and you can call me and we'll talk about it.
Well, we don't have to talk about it, I don't think. I think because you can't make the decision, right? Who has to make the decision?
No, there's not going to be anything going on your land. This is, this hearing is regarding a buffer between adjacent properties.
Why is this in here, Linda?
Because you are adjacent to the parcel, which is a very large parcel, and we're required to notify all adjacent property owners.
So, you say you're not going to conceal my land?
No.
Well, that's the word that was used in the letter. You're all about me on this stuff.
Let's put you together with people that can more specifically answer your questions, and whether it's Chatham Park or whether it is Victoria, and sit down and get some maps out, and Victoria is giving you her part here.
Oh, okay.
Good that you came to get clarification. Really glad you came to hear this.
Joseph B. Moore, yes, and that's we are. So, you're going to help me.
So, Miss Victoria, if I'm unable to answer your questions to your satisfaction, please do get back to the board.
I will. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
The next person signed up is Sophia. We're here to have her, because she has some concerns and your concerns. All right. Are there, at this point, would the engineers from Kinga Creek wish to speak to the matter of the perimeter buffers for the reclamation facility?
Good evening. I'm Jeremy Kennedy with Kinga Creek. Just here to say thank you for allowing us this opportunity. We're obviously in support of this. We've worked with staff to make great links to make sure that we meet all the design elements of Chatham Park, as well as what the talent is required of us, and we meet these landscape buffers on this, and we're here to answer any questions should the board have.
If it's possible for you to get together with Miss Cisco to answer some of her questions that about the sewage easement, although it's not a perimeter question, it is something that she's concerned about affecting the surrounding property.
Yes, and I don't know if I'm the one to talk to directly on that particular issue, but if she contacts Ms. Bailey, I'll contact as well, and we'll get someone to contact with her if she needs that after talking with Ms. Bailey.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Jeremy?
And Brian Blake, I suppose you're deferring to.
Yep.
Eric, okay, very good. Are there any other speakers with respect to this first public hearing on the reclamation facility for the rubber?
I'd like to ask a question. I would appreciate a little bit more clarity next time when identifying all properties affected by this buffer. I think the subject of this buffer is tucked away in the corner of the plan sheet, and I don't think it adequately describes and shows the adjoining properties and property owners. So, another exhibit that helps tell the story of this is within 500 feet of the perimeter, therefore is being shown and required, that would be really helpful. So, with that, I think we're talking about just properties to the west, immediately to the west of the proposed development, and that it is along a perennial stream, which includes 100-foot buffer, at least on the east side of the stream, because that's in the property of Chatham Park. And that is that buffer that is really going to do the lion's share of the screen, and it is documented here that it's well, would it, so it will be what looks like a pretty good screen to me. So, that's what I understand the issue for the public hearing.
Very good. We next have an annexation request regarding U-Banks Road property, Victoria. Oh, I'm sorry. Taylor Baldwin had a question that she wanted to ask.
It's not really a question, it's still a comment. I think when within homeowners, those type of letters, they need to clarify in there that the reason I'm sending it is because you are adjacent property.
We do.
And then, that way.
It states the very beginning, you're an adjacent property owner.
And maybe clarify, maybe again at the end or something. That way, someone will be confused and think that their property is being taken or anything such as that. Just for clarification. Thank you.
Are we ready for the annexation? Yes, we are ready for the U-Banks Road 10.22 acres.
All right. Chatham Park Investors have proposed the annexation of 10.22 acres located on the northwest corner of the U.S. Highway 64 business and U-Banks Road intersection. The parcel is owned PDD and is currently vacant.
Eric, is, there are no people signed up to speak for this particular section of the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be recognized that failed to sign up at the door? Hearing done, then we'll proceed to the next public hearing, which is an annexation request on the Long Forests Borough. Victoria?
Chatham Park Investors have proposed the annexation of 44.86 acres located also along here Pittsburgh Road, more than the Charlie Berks Road intersection. The area is owned PDD and is currently vacant. The applicant is not proposing that this location be served by water or wastewater.
And again, we did not have anyone sign up for this particular public hearing. Is there any question by the board or any other public comment for those people that did not sign up? Hearing done, then we'll proceed to the last public hearing, which is revisions to the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. I didn't see a mention of that, but Fred, are you, is our town engineer leading us in this discussion?
I certainly can.
Well, again, there is no one signed up to speak to this document, and so you may not have a great deal that you'd have to say. Are there any questions from the board regarding the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, or any people from the audience who failed to sign up at the front door?
My question is, what has changed? We've got three empty documents. I would not like to endeavor to compare it to the former or current without some assistance.
So, we could get you track changes. However, is it however? This is a brand-new model.
It's a blank.
There's only however. This is a brand-new model ordinance that the state has given us and requested us to use as a template. It's probably been rewritten from top to bottom as compared to our existing ordinance. So, there's no real way that we could have gone into our existing ordinance and modified it. So, we took the state standard model ordinance and modified it for Pittsburgh's purposes. So, we don't have the original or the existing ordinance modified to this. They're two completely different documents, actually. It makes it more difficult to compare.
Yeah, I understand. Well, if you can give the basics of what has changed and how it's going to affect the property.
The state gave us definitions that changed, so you might take a look at some definitions. They're minor, in my view, but they're what the state requires of us for -- we're a part of the National Flood Insurance Program, the NFIP. We have quite a few policies in Pittsburgh, flood insurance policies. We want to remain in good order, in good stead with the state, so that our citizens can maintain these policies. We have a, I call it a proactive ordinance, and it's been this way for years. We have a two-foot freeboard, which means the base flood elevation, which is the modeled floodplain elevation for all the streams that are modeled in that. We require a two-foot higher than that elevation, so it's a factor of safety. That's been the case in Pittsburgh for many years, I guess since 2007. We're blessed, fortunate, lucky to not have many floodplain areas in town. We're relatively busy with narrow floodplains, so we don't have an opportunity for lots of development in the floodplain, and that's a very good thing from floodplain management standpoint. So, the biggest difference is the structure of the ordinance, some definitions, but ultimately it's the exact same purpose, intent, language as the current. We do not allow development in the floodplain. It's prohibited. That's staying the same, without a variance. And so, really, there's no material, you know, on-the-ground difference that I can think of.
Floodplain is the 100-year storm?
It's the 100-year storm, and it's a, there's new maps that, this graphic here shows the hatched areas of the new, there's the current maps, they're called effective maps, and the new maps are called, currently called preliminary. They're going to become effective. So, this ordinance is going parallel with the new maps. There's been flood studies, we've had public workshops with Chatham County over a year ago, and so the new maps will be coming out basically with the ordinance. And we've sent letters to everyone in town who is affected by the new maps. I've received about four phone calls, and so that's kind of where we are. If we don't adopt the new ordinance and these new maps by November 17th, we will no longer be in the National Flood Insurance Program. It's that serious. So, we're doing as early as possible now to get the process ahead of schedule in case we have any last-minute unknowns that we need to take care of.
So, is this ordinance making reference to the new maps?
Yes.
Are those maps online?
They're online. They're in two locations. They're in the Chatham County GIS website as hatched areas, and they're also on this website called the FRIS, the flood rate, I'm forgetting the acronym. It's called FRIS, and it's the engineering data. It shows the elevations, it shows where the floodways are, and you can zoom in to your parcel and see exactly what's going on. I think we would best serve the citizens to plot out some of those maps, so that we have them for, you know, citizens to walk in the office or the library or town hall and look at the maps. FEMA no longer distributes hard copied maps like they used to. You have to go online to find them, so I think we should probably go ahead and plot them out in Pittsburgh in color, just like they are on the website, so everyone can see where they are, and we can answer questions a little bit better.
Board, do you have any other questions? Fred, I'm remembering things that have been spoken of in respect to the two recent storms with that, and people certainly in Texas are saying that that 100-year or even the 500-year is not sufficient to protect the public. Your thoughts or opinion?
That's a cross between the insurance, National Flood Insurance Program requires these maps for flood, for risk assessment for insurance, which is completely different than storm events that actually occur. They're two different animals. So, when you say, oh, we've had the 1,000-year flood in, you know, two months in a row, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. It's statistically a 1,000-year flood from a document that was written back in the '40s. It's called Technical Paper '40. Anywho, it has to do with insurance risk, so insurance adjusters can rate the likelihood of your structure flooding, therefore the premium, et cetera. So, they're really not related, although people understand what 100-year storm is supposed to mean or 1,000-year storms. I would say, my personal opinion is, everyone should purchase flood insurance, because you do not know if you're going to flood or not, from a river or from down the street. It's just a very risky business, but that's just my opinion. A lot of people in Houston did not have flood insurance. They were not in the floodplain, but they have historically flooded, and that's, it's a very unfortunate situation, so, you know, these flood maps are really only good for an initial understanding of the probability of you flooding, but not the actual fact that you may or may not flood.
When I started doing residential real estate closing, I understood that the county and the town had opted out from the federal flood insurance program. Have we just recently opted in?
No, we've been an active member since the original maps were effective, I think it's 2007, or maybe '09. I can't remember, when our original ordinance was adopted. So, we have not opted out.
Do I have to hand back?
Yeah, my question was, in this hatch, these hatched areas, does this mean that people in this hatched area will have to have flood insurance?
It does not mean that. It means that by law, if you sell or transfer your property and you're in that area, then you have to disclose it at closing, and if it's a mortgage, the mortgage company will require the new owner to obtain flood insurance.
Do you have a question? Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
The next on the agenda is the public expression time. Allow in three minutes to each of the speakers of the night. Mary Phyllis Horn, if you will come to the podium, give your name and address, and give us your thoughts on causing the podium.
As you know, I've been here a few times on this situation at Creekside, and I looked at the And I looked at the town ordinance, the 30-year law having to do with housing regulations. And I talked with Brian Grisbeck. He said that there is nobody on the town staff who is qualified to inspect the apartments. And if there's nobody that is qualified, therefore, there's no way that they can enforce it. He suggested I talk with the county. And I talked to, I sent an email to each of the county commissioners. Diana Hale, Karen Howard both responded. And Diana says that basically, the only concern is that the county does not have an agreement with Pittsburgh for funding to pick up these tests. And the same thing is what Renee Benshaw said. She said, based on something the town, well, she said what I said. The town will likely ask the county to handle inspections. However, there are major problems with that currently. Most importantly, they are not staffed to add this workload. And secondly, they do not have a formal agreement to do the inspections, so they don't have the authority to enforce. Why I'm here is, it seems like this is something that should be addressed by the town because it is a town law. And Brian told me that there's no money, there's nobody assigned to it. So I'm asking if there's any way that you could have this put into the town requirements? Because we need, in a number of cases, we need for somebody to come out and to look at some of the more, especially the more serious violations, I think violations, at Creekside Apartments for people who just can't afford to get this done for themselves. And I'm not sure that if they got somebody to do that, I don't know that that would be applicable here or not. I just thought I'd present that.
Thanks very much.
Well, Ms. Horn, I agree that this is the type of function that would follow into a building inspections program. And we do have the county doing building inspections for the town of Pittsburgh. There is not a, I guess, a specific agreement for this function, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
I think it's a way we can put that as one of the services that the town provides.
And would that include, like, checking for mold? Because I understand some kinds of mold are not dangerous, but others are?
I don't know about the mold issue. I don't know that building inspections does mold.
Okay. But it would help the rest of it, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
And speaking about the situation at Creekside, you all are having apartment owners' meeting tomorrow night at 5:00 at the State Bartholomew's Fellowship. And so I've been asked, if any town board members that can attend, please do so. And any other interested persons, certainly you're welcome as well.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Next on the public expression list is Leslie Landis.
Good evening, Florida Commissioners, Mayor, and staff. My name is Leslie Landis. I live at 21 Randolph Court in Pittsburgh. You have no doubt heard of the city by the bay and the second city and the city that never sleeps. Well, Pittsburgh doesn't really have an official slogan. What? I want to tell you about the Pittsburgh Slogan Contest and encourage you to participate. Main Street Pittsburgh, of which I am a board member, is aiming to capture our downtown's special qualities in a slogan that is seven words or less, original, positive, and clearly relates to Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh is a town steeped in a rich history and on the edge of tremendous growth. We want a slogan that celebrates the things that make Pittsburgh unique. That might be a piece of architecture, a story or characters from our past, a geological or natural element, a certain traffic circle. This contest calls on us all to mine our collective wisdom and cleverness and conjure a slogan for Pittsburgh. So I hope everyone will gather your wordsmith friends around you and grab your thesaurus, put on your thinking caps, and get busy because the deadline is November 5. These postcards can be found at a few downtown retailers and can be filled out there and left in an envelope near the cash register. There's some space on the back for your information and your slogan ideas. We also have a Facebook page called the Pittsburgh Slogan Facebook Event, where you can leave your comments down below. And if you'd rather share your ideas in person, we will have a booth at the annual Pittsburgh Street Fair on Saturday, October 28. And we hope you'll stop by to show off your clever ideas anytime between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. And learn more about Main Street Pittsburgh. The contest winner will be announced at the Pittsburgh Tree Lighting Ceremony, which is the kickoff for Pittsburgh's holidays on November 19. And will be comprised of a gift basket from downtown retailers that includes items as well as coupons and gift certificates. We are eagerly awaiting your creative responses. For those of you who don't know, Main Street Pittsburgh is an emerging nonprofit organization working to stimulate economic development within the context of historic preservation using a comprehensive approach to downtown. So I've given each of you a postcard. I look forward to seeing your ideas. And if anyone else wants a postcard, please let me know. Have some extras, thanks.
Thank you, Leslie. Our next speaker is Dennis Hearn. What Mr. Hearn is going to speak about tonight. I also received an email from Lorraine Tualdi, who is Mr. Hearn's tenant in property on Hearn Street, Hearn Road. So for whatever you don't accomplish yourself, I will be glad to either share the email from Lorraine or make it a part of the public record. She wanted to support you in your event, in your speaking.
Yeah, she was going to try to be here, but her schedule had just been no. Good evening, Dennis Hearn, on the house on Hearn Road. Situation is the water lines going to our community. This line was put in back in '63 or '04, somewhere in that area. I remember being young. It came from the Hall River to the water plant there beside Rock Springs Church. So when y'all redone it and brought it from the dam and up to the water plant, that showed you the water line was open. So we've got a two-inch line that leads to water plant coming back to our houses. Off of that two-inch line is an inch and a half. These lines were put in for eight or 10 houses. Now we've got almost 30. So we have very little water pressure at my house. The other tenants on the two-inch line have good water pressure, but they're the ones that gets all the muddy water when the line breaks and puts in. So Kathy Hearn, which lives at the end of Hearn Road, she catches all the muddy water. Well, two houses down there catches all the muddy water. They finally put in a blow-off valve, but it's three-quarter inch. That's not enough to get the muddy water out for a short period. It takes several days before it runs and clears the water up. She had a brand-new blouse she put in a washing machine, turned it on, went started doing things, went back, she opened it up, everything in there was muddy due to the mud. She's got a, something that the town had given them to take out mud stains, and it didn't work. That was just how bad it was. She sent a jug of water just to show the settlement that came out of her washing machine. So, and she just took it down in there and scooped it up. And with that being done, you would think all of a sudden it would have still been at the bottom, but it wasn't. She got a little bit. Lorraine's purposes, when I tried to, had to redo the house when the other tenant had moved out, I had it turned on in my name. Couldn't even clear the paintbrushes. Not enough water pressure to even clear it. Go outside, five minutes to fill up a gallon container of water. That depends on what time of day you're there. Pittsburgh went out and checked it at 10:00 in the morning. Everybody then took the showers and was on to work. They say they had 28-pound pressure, which is state law. But it's still not enough to flush the toilet and wash your hands at the same time. When she does her clothes, she has to do that when she gets ready to go to bed at night because it takes so long to fill the washing machines up. Whomever I spoke with at one time said I would have to come for y'all to see about getting maybe a new line put in. Because I do know that line's been repaired many a time, a two-inch line from where it just blew it out. The house, we had, well, it was a trailer and added on right beside the water line. Caught fire one night. Fire department got there and they couldn't put it out because of one truckload of water going up. Would have had a fire hydrant sitting within 30 feet of that house, they could have saved it. You know, or the majority of it, it wouldn't have been down to the ground. So I'm just asking if somehow or another can go through to getting a new line put in and big enough to have a fire hydrant. If you look at the map now, that could also tie in at the bottom of, at Vindham Road and Hearn Road and make a big loop in there as it goes over to Vindham, which I think got first Chatham Water there. And that would in turn keep all water circling in that bigger area. So that's all I'm saying for you. If you would love to read Lorraine's statement, because I'm sure she put a lot more than I just said.
Lorraine indicated that she moved there last April and that it has very low to zero water pressure, both to Dennis Hearn, my landlord, and the town water department. She has mentioned it too many times. Each one tells me it's the other's responsibility, and I have to continue with little or no pressure to this day. She talks about how difficult it is to fill the washers, the bathtub. She's finally given up on that, taken showers instead. And it takes twice as long to get the shampoo out of her hair and wash the dishes. And she lives alone, and she worries what would happen in a household that had children. So again, she says, my landlord's told me that the age of the water pipes and the fact that there were only a few of them here when they were installed, the population has more than doubled since then. And she goes on to describe the very things that you described, Mr. Hearn. I enjoy living here and the water is a big part of quality of life and sanitation. I'm confident that this problem will be dealt with under the leadership of the board and look forward to seeing crews on Hearn Road upgrading the water system. We'll add that to your comments, and Mr. Hearn, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, can I say that?
The jar of water that's on Kathy's.
Yeah, we want to see the jar.
Regarding that.
It's settled in since I've sent it in here. You just shake it up, you can just see how it is. The brand-new blouse that she had, you get to look at it, you see the stains that it's cooking up. And she used the stuff the town gave her to take the muddy stains out, and it still didn't work. You want to look at it closer?
I know that Dennis is, I guess Dee is your nephew. And his daughter built a house down there. And she told me that since they moved in, they've had absolutely no pressure. And they just built a new house back in there. You know that's not indoor plumbing problems or anything like that. It's pressure coming from our lines.
What Dee also had done was had a meter moved three property low to his property line. He said that's still the same.
Well, it sounds like it's also a safety hazard as well with the fire issues. Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Our next speaker is Randy Holder.
Mr. Hearn, I'll add to the appreciation from the board that the first time you presented, I really didn't understand. But I thoroughly understand the problem now. I really do appreciate you coming back a second time.
The first time was to, maybe y'all could have seen before the water lines, how it ran out. Thank you.
Good evening, board. This will be very quick. Didn't intend to speak on that, but when I was sitting up there with you guys, there had been a number of complaints and/or concerns in that area. And the town and county have tried to fix it, but I think it's probably about time to investigate what we can do because those water lines are kind of reaching their functional obsolescence. But that had been an issue constantly. I was just coming up to see whether the board would be open to the idea of maybe doing a resolution for another one of our former citizens who passed, Mr. Holmes. If the board would be receptive to that, I'd be happy to send a draft for you to review to Ms. Alissa send you, just as I had asked about Mr. Bryant. We all knew Mr. Holmes, I had worked with him for years. It's just a sad passing of a lot of history and knowledge of our community. And I think that since this board did honor Mary Hayes Holmes at her passing and then subsequently named the park up there, I think it would be reasonable and nice for the family to honor Mr. Holmes.
Thank you. I've worked for Ed Holmes for about four or five years when I first graduated from law school and have nothing but just the highest regard for him. So I'll be glad to help draft something, and Randy, maybe add some things in too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next, our next section deals with our participation in other governmental agencies, such as the Economic Development Commission, the Fairgrounds, the Triangle Council of Government. And the only thing that I participated in this past two weeks was a conference call regarding one poor dog seen in the water system and was very, very pleased to have two very good results from the county, from the state agency. So are there any updates? I think one of the things, of course, we need to call and focus attention is the fact that the fair is up there. This upcoming week, opening Thursday through Sunday. We were all discussing sending our okra and our stewed tomatoes and things like that, canned tomatoes. I think they're receiving agricultural products tomorrow for judging. And then several of us will be there on Thursday night at 5:00 for the opening of the fair as well. Are there any other needs we need to call and focus attention?
Let me just reiterate the fair. And it is beginning September 28 through October 1. We invite everyone out to the fair. It's just over here on Martin Luther King Drive. There'll be rides, games, food, fun. We have local food, local live music, and Northwood High School talent show. So if you all would, please participate. It's a community event, you will have a great time. It's a community event, you will have a great time.
Uh, the main street program has closed concept.
Uh, that brings us into old business. The first item of old business, Jeff Jones will be working with us on the Chatham Park additional elements. Group two.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, members of the board. Um, this is an overview of sort of where we stand after last week's hopefully productive workshop that we all had on Thursday of last week at Chatham Park regarding these particular elements of, um, open space, tree protection, landscaping, stormwater, and the general provisions. During that workshop, we discussed all these elements, and in particular, the stormwater element had lots of good, good discussion, um, and there was some desire by members of this board to have some additional information given to you all on ephemeral streams and how that might impact development, um, and how those things, how those streams are scored. Fred's going to come up here in a minute and give you a little primer on ephemeral streams. I'll give you sort of an overview. We're going to have a workshop on Thursday of this week here in this room, starting at seven, to discuss not only what Fred is going to be talking to you all about tonight about, but more in stormwater, more about the stormwater manual, and the scoring system that's within the stormwater manual. Uh, that was a desire by this board to have some additional public involvement on that particular element, so we're going to have that on Thursday this week. Um, the goal is for staff in Chatham Park to hear, um, some additional feedback from the public this coming Thursday, and for Chatham Park to take feedback that they received from you all at our meeting on Thursday of last week, and come back with revised or answers to comments, um, that was made at the workshop. Once staff receives those, we'll certainly bring those forward to you, um, and they may come one or two elements at a time. We'll just have to see how Chatham Park responds to what we have. I'll go ahead and mention, we do have another workshop on October 5th to discuss the last four elements, and that's going to be the public facilities, transit, um, or public, um, public facilities and affordable housing. So, those are going to be, um, public garden. That'll be on October 5th, and that'll be at the same location in Chatham Park. With that, I'll bring Fred up, and he'll give you a little, little information on ephemeral streams.
Ephemeral streams. Uh, I've, I've got about 15 years of experience of identifying streams and so ephemerals. Luckily, I had a lot of these little pin drives. I could go back and find some photographs and some descriptions of what these little landforms are and where they're located. This shot came from a USGS, um, website that shows an ephemeral stream in an area that's probably a pasture. They, they basically are, uh, landforms where water flows only during rainfall, or only just after rainfall events. They, they do not contain water, uh, like an intermittent stream or perennial stream. They're not, they're not influenced by groundwater, so they dry up. Most people look at them and just don't think much about them, because they're not, they're not big, they don't seem significant, you, you, um, you see little wildlife associated with ephemeral streams. You do see, um, you do see well-defined channels with banks and bottoms, et cetera. So, your, uh, the copy of your presentation, you can go to the next slide.
You have a remark?
Oh, thank you. Ephemerals, uh, as I stated, um, they're, they're very small and they only contain water during precipitation. The other, the other key thing to, to note is they're, they're, they're not, they're never man-made, and they're, they're also not, um, a modified natural channel. You, you can't take what used to be an ephemeral, dig it out, 20 years later, call it ephemeral because it's been modified. So, you can't score it. This is all about, there's a scientific method to score these, uh, features. Uh, groundwater does not influence them. Um, the way in North Carolina that you certify streams is through this Division of Water Quality Scoring Regime and Certification. And the, the point system, um, for intermittent and perennial starts at 19 points. So, ephemerals, if you go out there and score anything on the land, it has to first of all score below 19. And in the case of, um, Chatham County, which is the most local ephemeral stream jurisdiction around that I could come up with, um, they start at 10 points. So, if you score a feature and it scores eight points, it's not ephemeral. If it scores nine points, it's not ephemeral. It has to score 10. And the, the scoring system, it has, it has a little subjectivity to it. You know, everyone that's trained in this field could go out to 10 streams and come up with some different answers of where this ephemeral stream is exactly and where it is And the reason it's subjective is because it has to do with the areas in the scoring form, which you have a copy of, which it, you have everything from absent to weak to moderate to strong with different scoring components. And one person might call a feature weak, which is one point, and another might call it moderate, which is two points. So, that, that decision-making matrix is, is, is the part of the subjectivity to this. It's based on professional opinion. A lot of times, there'll be no change, just very clearly, um, everyone agrees, but sometimes it's not so much. So, the last bullet there is, um, talks about Chatham County's buffer width, which is 30 feet. And, uh, even though this is not part of my talk, that's just a fact I wanted to make sure you're aware of. Okay. So, if, if you take hydrology 101 or 201, you'll learn that, uh, watersheds are comprised of ephemeral streams or headwater streams. At some point, ephemeral streams become intermittent streams, and that's where Chatham Park has done a very good job of identifying where intermittent streams start on the landscape. And I actually went out with them in the field to confirm the intermittent stream origins. Sometimes intermittent streams do not have an ephemeral stream above it, it just starts on the land. It's just, it has to do with geology and hydrology. Other times, it may not be an ephemeral, but there's a landform drainage pattern coming, and it just becomes intermittent all of a sudden. Other times, intermittent has ephemeral above it, an ephemeral channel above it, to a certain point where that would stop, because your 10-point score system would dictate that. So, the, the way Chatham Park got their intermittent origins was using the same scoring system of 19 or above, or 19 to 30, 19 to 29, and that's how they came up with the map that we've approved. So, in looking at ephemerals, um, there's quite a lot of them in the watershed. The statistic is 75 to 85 percent. When you add up all the stream links, uh, are intermittent or ephemeral, not perennial, the, the big streams like Robus and Creek. So, a lot of, a lot of stream segments are comprised of a combination of intermittent or ephemeral.
Is that a rule of thumb or specific to our statistics, our locals?
That's a, that's a, a national average. It does depend on if you're in the coastal plain and things like that, but, yeah. I, I added this in to show you how the points break down. Um, there's your scores. Perennial streams are 35 points or greater. Intermittent are 19 to 34, and ephemeral are 10 to 18 in Chatham County. Um, I don't know of other jurisdictions that regulate ephemeral streams. I've not seen it, but it's probably out there. Jurisdictional wetlands, uh, they have a 50-foot buffer, but that has nothing to do with this. I just pulled everything off the website here and edited. So, you also have to understand that if you're talking about buffers on ephemeral, um, there'd be a lot of work to do in the field to figure out where these features are located. There'd be a lot of peer review, I would think, and it, it may or may not impact what they're planning to do, as an example, in the small area plant, because I've never, I've not looked at that level of detail. So, I have no idea what that would do to lots of layouts of anything. You can always cross buffers, so the, the one issue, um, including the Chatham Park additional buffer, is you can do things in the buffer that are allowed, including, um, in Chatham County, including ephemeral buffers. You can cross them, you can use them for certain things. So, one of the, one of the issues, if Pittsburgh were to contemplate some type of ephemeral protection, is what you can do in the buffer and how wide the buffer is, and where the, where the ephemeral streams are that you're most interested in. This is a document from, uh, the Department of Agriculture that I have always used in the past. It shows relative buffer widths out to 300 feet, and what the purpose is, and you've all heard conversations, uh, specifically related to Chatham Park on buffer widths. So, this is kind of a general, uh, buffer width, uh, purpose. Everything from temperature, sediment to temperature, to, um, nutrients, on out to wildlife. So, ephemeral would be somewhere in the very front end, which is steam, streambank stabilization, and possibly some, um, well, we're not in the mountains, so, temperature, that, that has to do with trout fisheries, but ideally, ephemeral protection is mostly for soil stabilization immediately adjacent to the, the feature.
It'd be for stormwater purposes too, right? Because the drain is...
Yeah, it would, it would collect, depending on where stormwater, where natural or man-made drainage patterns come off of development, it would, it would relate to stormwater, and stormwater would flow through the buffer and into the ephemeral channel. Some communities allow stormwater management practices within ephemeral channel, because stormwater practices, depending on what you do, you, you, you can mimic essentially the, what the ephemeral channel does, which allows water to slow down, run over rocks, and stay at a velocity that's re, that, that doesn't cause erosion and scour before it gets further downhill and accumulates with all the other water into the intermittent and perennial channels. So, uh, and there's, there's, there's best management practices, or they're now, they're now called stormwater control measures, that mimic ephemeral channels. So, there's an argument on one side that you could use that for that type of practice, if that's the best thing for a certain site plan to meet the water quality standard, or the goal or the intent of the water quality. Um, as you all know, when you change land use, it changes water flow. That's what this chart shows, that forests typically have the highest quality of water that runs off and on down through industrial, which is not, which is the least desirable or the least water quality. Imperviousness falls among those land uses that I think you're pretty familiar with. Let's go to the slide. Whoops. Yeah, went a little bit too far there. Okay, my apologies. That's a graphic of what a buffer does, basically, a vegetative buffer. It slows the water down, it gets absorbed through the roots, it creates a system so that water enters the channel either subsurface or along the surface, but at a slower velocity, so soil erosion doesn't occur. That's really the, that's the prime intent of a riparian buffer in the first place, is to slow the water down before it gets into the stream, and to filter it and to allow the vegetation to do some of the work. Uh, this is a slide I thought was important to show you, uh, impaired streams in North Carolina. So, a lot of, a lot of work and money goes into fixing impaired streams, repairing streams. It's very, very expensive to fix an impaired stream. There's businesses out there that do very well, it, you know, it might be $300 a linear foot to fix a stream. So, it gets into the hundreds of thousands of dollars and the millions of dollars, and so there's mitigation issues, et cetera. So, um, an argument could be made that you have less impaired streams the more, you know, the more buffers you use. It's, in some cases, they work, in some cases, they don't. Um, I'm just saying this because there's a lot of issues related to riparian buffers that are still, um, unknown, or there's, there's still trial and error because of the type of development that drains to these buffers. That just shows you the impaired streams. In general, riparian buffers will limit or minimize the number of impaired streams moving forward with new development. This is a slide that shows, um, where, how impairments occur. The first one is interesting, unknown, because there's a lot of science, that's absolutely not absolutely known. So, um, as an example, Robus and Creek is impaired, and they basically called it from urbanization, um, or sedimentation, where sediment covers the bottom of the creek, and so it's impaired, but they can't point their finger to agriculture, development, other. So, it's unknown. Urban runoff is pretty well studied, it's pretty well-known in the stormwater management world, how that impairs streams and impacts streams with runoff and, um, more flow over time and things like that. So, this is just to show you how impairments happen. The board had a discussion about monitoring at the workshop. So, I use this slide, it shows, this is a state slide about the type of things you monitor for, all the way from oxygen to turbidity, metals, chlorophyll A. Chlorophyll A's the big one for us with Jordan Lake, of course. So, when you talk about monitoring, uh, any of these could be monitored in, in a water body. Um, if, if, and the state does this for Jordan Lake, for, uh, streams that are, that are, depending upon the classification, um, et cetera, but I just wanted to show that slide.
Fred?
Yes?
That's monitoring chemistry, but are there other means of measuring volume?
Yes. You, you have to put weirs across a channel and measure the flow, then you can convert that to volume.
And that's something you would do on a temporary basis, because you wouldn't want to permanently add that in the stream bed, would you?
You could, you could, you could install it, not necessarily in the stream bed, but right at the beginning of this, of the discharge point of interest, like from a development, you could, you could do that. I've done it with 319 grants, but it's, you know, it costs, you have to monitor it. It is temporary, you don't, you don't see that, you know, the, the monitoring that's permanent goes along those gauges, like the Bindham gauge on the Hall River. That's a permanent monitoring, like we discussed earlier, and that, that has a cost associated with it as well. So, riparian buffers, as I mentioned, do have benefits, there's science to back it up. The argument is, where do you put them and how wide do you put them? Ultimately, um, the idea is they do filter pollutants. The argument can be, well, how, how wide do you want to put it, again, and on what type of stream do you, do you place it? There, there's plenty of data in science that shows that these buffers work. I just want to make that clear. There's plenty of science that shows these buffers work. The, um, the benefits are described here, there's a lot of other benefits that you've all contemplated and discussed. and discussed. The Shiner being one of them in the Hall River. So because I'm not doing advocacy work, I'm just trying to state facts. The streams, ephemeral channels, based on all of my research and, and understanding, they, they do pretreat and reduce nitrogen from runoff because of their interaction with the rocks and the substrate, and they do reduce sediment for the same reason. But they have to be drained to properly. You can't put a pipe just dumping it straight into the creek. You have to slow it down, and there's, there's a lot of research going on with this. Level spreaders, it turns out, are not the answer. They're pretty much, over 90% of level spreaders have failed across the state, and so there's a new conversation going on with the state and researchers on what to do about putting water in a diffuse flow through buffers before they enter the channel. One of them is to just pipe it straight to it with another engineering practice that slows down the velocity before it actually takes off. That's an ongoing piece of research. The other fact about ephemerals is the, you, you don't have water that sustains aquatic life, as the water disappears and there's no groundwater. I'll just tell you a quick story. I was in a, I was basically in a court case where one group wanted this ditch that was full of English ivy to be called an ephemeral stream, and I, I pushed, using science that it was not. I'm sorry, they wanted it to be an intermittent stream. It turned out to be an ephemeral stream, even though it had English ivy in it. But it's a very subjective science, so I would just urge care and contemplation moving into the ephemeral world as it relates to this conversation. There's clearly some benefits to certain types of treatment of ephemeral buffers. I've seen it work pretty well, and I've seen areas work, I've seen areas where the, the intent was to protect the stream, but it didn't work because of the way the development occurred adjacent to it. So that's why I said it may be effective. It sort of depends. Be happy to answer any questions. I did provide a USGS map that was provided by S&amp;E C from Chatham Park. It just is an example of all of their intermittent stream origins on their property, north and south of the bypass. And I included the scoring sheet if you want to ask me anything about that.
John?
Thank you so much, Fred. This is very helpful. I'd hope to buy the second bullet, though, and would ask for verification. I understand the first clause, water is necessary for aquatic life, but what does that have to do with specific vegetation management, immediate and adjacent? Is that the buffer we're referring to?
Yes. I guess what I mean is, is the, the benefit, or the use, or the, the fact about an ephemeral channel is that, and for intermittent and perennial streams, you really concentrate on the water itself and the life within that water, and the quality of that water. With ephemerals, you can't think of life or water, because that's really not the issue. The issue is, what's happening adjacent to the, this feature, you know, is it a pasture? Is it a road? Is it woods? So my, my, my point with this statement, I apologize if it was confusing, is that if you can manage the specific vegetation adjacent to it, I probably should have added, and hydrology flow to it, then the streams themselves, by virtue of protecting the stream itself, the buffer around the stream may be effective. And what I mean by may be effective for water quality downstream, that's, that was my, my intent of that statement.
Any more questions or comments?
This is USGS map. I think I'm counting 55 points of origin. I know.
A lot of them.
Yeah, so best I can tell, it's 55. So that's to say that you've walked every one of these?
Maybe not everyone, but a majority of them. We, we handpicked some based on topography and some other factors, so, no, I have not been to every one of these.
Has Chatham Park got these determined to be jurisdictional from, from the state?
Yes, and the Army Corps.
For wetlands? State's going to determine streams, right?
The Corps looks at streams, too. They call it unimportant or important.
Right.
And so they, they've verified, and they're in the process of this new jurisdictional determination, the five-year, it's a five-year cycle. So that's where they're, they're, my last understanding is they're still waiting to hear that all of these hit the five-year cycle and it's all nailed down.
So the Corps is using important, unimportant, and the state's using perennial and intermittent?
Mm-hmm, correct.
And the master plan and everything else is talking about perennial and intermittent?
Yep.
And so these designations will be valid for five years. Five years from now, it'll be a clean slate?
Well, they have to do a re-designation.
Right.
Because they move.
They have to go out in the field to look at it and make determinations.
Yeah, they, I don't think they look at every one of them, they look at some of them. And we could get a, it's a, it's a sampling, but I, I could find out exactly what they do, if you want to know.
Let me help.
Okay.
All right. Next, next is Water Shortage Management Plan.
I'm sorry, I have one other question on this. So I understand your point that it's subjective, whether or not a particular landmark is an ephemeral channel. I also understand that there's an effort been made from people presumably well-trained to score, attempting to quantify something which is subjective.
Correct.
But I had been led to believe that, that a lot of this work has already been done for this land, and that ephemerals are already mapped.
I had not seen that. I know that the intermittent origins have been mapped.
Intermittent origins, or it's where the, where the designation of intermittent stream starts.
Right, the 19-point stream starts. It doesn't mean that above that has been scored.
Thank you. Sure.
All right, are we at Water Shortage Management Plan? Fred, especially if you can lead us in this, or Fred?
Well, I'll just, I'll set the table and then turn it over to somebody that knows what he's talking about. Can we recall the last meeting? We talked a little bit about the draft plan, I think Commissioner Kielko had a few questions on it. Previous to discussing this at the last meeting, I think we had introduced it maybe a meeting or two before that, but I think at the time, we received a couple of questions and possible corrections on it. I think this version that you have here tonight reflects that first initial wave of corrections. We haven't made any additional corrections to it following this last meeting, so I don't know if we want to regurgitate some of those issues, maybe than we had, we had before, or, or not. And I think maybe Fred is probably in a better position to answer some of the issues that we had regarding, I think maybe the origin of the fines and some of the thresholds and things of that nature, so I thought I would turn it over to you guys to figure out where we're going here.
As you have recalled, the bulk of the discussion was regarding the levels of response, stages of response, the charts that are separate.
And the fine, the way the fines were labeled and carried on.
Are there questions from the board?
Well, I had a question about the thresholds for when we would establish that there's business possibly kicking in. One of my questions was whether or not exceeding 80% of our plant's capacity was indication of a deficiency in water. And I think I've come to reconcile that that is a reasonable threshold to establish, because we're using a lot of water and our plants are really working hard, and by then, I'm sure we're working on, along before that point, we are working on another source of water, whether it be Jordan Lake partnership connections, whether it be another run-of-the-river intake, but redundant water supply is going to be critical, so this, I think this is a good measurement. But it got me to reading more closely the OR that says 100, or 90%, 80%, OR, certain amount of water measured in the river via this gauge that's in the Hall River, and which really tells us whether or not there's enough, well, how much water is coming down the river. Whether we're treating it and producing it and pumping it out to the system or not, there may be a shortage in the river itself. And it says for the first measurement, 180 cubic feet per second for 10 consecutive days. Well, I went to the gauge today and I looked at it, it's 114 CFS, and it is dropping rapidly over the last 10 days. So I don't think we're in the 180, we're not in stage two yet, but if things keep going, we'll get to stage two in the next couple of weeks. We'll get to stage three a couple of weeks after that, and so on. And so I had a conversation with Fred, asking him how to re-gauge for the data on the website. And one of the things he thought to do was maybe check these numbers, maybe check, see these are the numbers that we want to use. They're representative of really the, the thresholds of concern we should have. And Fred, one of the things I thought of afterwards was, because 10 days also, very reasonable time, so I understand, but I want to take some more time to think about that and do some research and consult with my folks. But I still remain concerned about this idea of a double penalty, where when we get into these thresholds, that we start charging increased rates for usage at the same time that we might penalize you $500. So I want to think about that as a board. Is that something we want to do, to tell our customers? You may have to pay 150% of the normal rate and get a $500 fine on top of that. So I want to think about that.
That's Section 6 enforcement. All right. Anything further? We're going to take this back under consideration. Next item is the Authorization and Regulation Contract. The Town Hall, from Rupert.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To have the point this evening is a couple of things in your package. First of all, my cover memo, which outlines the request, and also the response to the proposal from Hobbs Architects for the space needs assessment, building and design for future town, Pittsburgh Town Hall. I also included in your packets the request for qualifications that was distributed on the town's website, as well as in the North Carolina Professional American Institute of Architects. We, as I indicated in my memo, this is, the origin story on this is that we purchased 1.27 acres of property located at 50 West Salisbury Street back in July. This followed quite a bit of discussion, and not only, not only amongst ourselves, but also within the county on future use of the property. It was ultimately decided at the meeting in July, or, excuse me, the meeting in June previous to that purchase, that we would go ahead with the property purchase. And so we, we executed it just after the court. On July 21st, I published the RFQ that I mentioned just a moment ago, and it is included in your packet. We had a total of seven architectural firms respond. I talked to, talked to approximately three of them, including Hobbs Architect. August 18th, seven, the responses came in and began meeting the quality of the responses to the evaluation criteria that I outlined, that I outlined in the, in the RFQ. And I think, I think that, that evaluation process allowed me to separate one for additional discussion, and that was with Hobbs Architect. So based on the proposal from Hobbs, and based on the quality of work I think that has been done in the community, as well as through the referred sources of work that Hobbs is, is commissioned on in other communities, as well as their commitment, I think, to architectural, historic architectural standards in the downtown, and the commitment in the downtown, and familiarity of, of, I guess, how a project is, is done from front to finish. My recommendation at this stage would be to ask for authorization to negotiate a contract subject to review and approval with Hobbs for the space use assessment and building design for the Town Hall. Sort of like I indicated in the, in the memo, this is not a commitment in and of itself, but actual, actually, I guess, a allowance for proceedings, go ahead with, with the next step of this process to determine whether or not we have, we have the firm. I think, I think at this stage, we've been able to determine that the firm is highly qualified. Now the next stage would be to come up with a services contract that meets our needs and help the project get to where it's wanting. I would open it up for any questions and concerns.
Questions from the board?
I don't really have any questions, but I have a few concerns. I know that we purchased this property. Firstly, I wasn't knowing that we were going to be headed this quick in design features. When I hear Mr. Hearn up here with the water problems that we have, and the Creekside problem that they're having, and then I hear from Ms. Horn that the town doesn't have any money, so I'm a little shocked that we're moving this quick on the Town Hall. I'm, I think we really need to get our priorities in order. I know this is not, nothing that's going to be built overnight, but I really think we need to make sure that this is something that we're going to be spending a lot of
If I could respond, I appreciate, I appreciate your concerns, and I think you're definitely coming at it from the right angle. Just a point of clarification, I think maybe on one of the citizen's comments that was made earlier, even though it may not directly pertain to this particular issue, and see how, point out that there, it could be related. When I had spoken with Ms. Horn, I indicated that the town did not have a position of inspections for, a position budgeted for inspections, necessarily that the town didn't have any money. And second, I think if we did need to make water improvements, water system improvements, both within the town and in our water service area, I think we're certainly in a pretty decent position financially to take those on as well. So one of the things that we'd be doing with this is trying to establish, first of all, the design work, and then that design work would lead into some estimates of cost, and that we would, at that point, engage with our financial advisors to determine the best way to go above paying for it. Certainly, we have a building there. It was, I'm not, I'm not quite sure, did we ever really discuss timing of it, and, you know, me maybe saying that I didn't want to purchase a property to have a building just sort of life follow and go back. life follow and go back. And I think the town intended to purchase that property with, with the needs for new town hall and stuff.
Yeah, I agree. I appreciate that, Mr. Brusbeck, but the comment from Mr. Brooks had no reason why I said it.
I, I wasn't even thinking about that.
Jay, I agree, hearing Mr. Hearn tonight, that's, that's acceptable. That is a priority. It has decent, clean, renewable waters in it. And, you know, the time, the whole time he was talking about it, I was thinking about what happens with the fire protection. You have too much line outside the fire protection, I can bear my own back. Right. So fire protection, it did come up. And so I think it's a critical matter, I think we've never addressed those things. I think the inspections, you know, we, we've, we've got an inspections department that's called county. And if we're going to have another agreement, amendment to that agreement, we need to do that. I hear that, you know, their inspections department is fee-based, and, you know, that means we're probably going to have to come up with some money to fund those requests when they come up, that we pay the fee for the inspector to go do the work.
Right.
So I think, you know, we've got to do these things. But I think town hall has been a critical matter for us for, for years, in years. And I think we did purchase this property with the sole intent of getting going and fixing this problem. So I know we, we talked about our lease at Chatham Mills and not wanting it to go too long because we want to be stuck having a new town hall and having to pay rent somewhere else. And we, so we brought that lease back in, into a more reasonable timeframe. So I think it's appropriate to, to get moving on this immediately. And with that, I'll make the motion that we, on plus that, negotiate a contract.
Okay. Moved by Michael Fioco, seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. There is no new business on our agenda this evening, but our next item is the manager's update on projects.
Thank you. I'll be somewhat, somewhat brief with this, of course, the new town hall. We've been recommending tonight, I see we have the, we have, I did not, nothing personal, I didn't invite you guys, but you're more than welcome to come forward. But I want to point out, we do have, I didn't recognize them, I didn't see them.
I should have done so. Bruce Lee and Taylor Hobbs are with us this evening, so thank you very much.
So the, the space needs assessment in and of itself will help determine what kind of, what kind of room each of our departments will need in a new building. In addition to that, we've also pledged that the county will have some involvement, and so conversations will happen with the county on that piece as well, and that leads into the actual building design. And the, once we've executed a contract, if one of the contracts we're liking, then, then we'll go ahead and work with the financial advisors, as I, as I indicated, to kind of determine how we were going to pay for it. And again, I want to just distress that, yeah, I completely agree with what you're saying, and agree with Commissioner Fioco as well. We have, we have needs up and down the line that we can, we can begin to address. I think we've been in good financial position over the last, at least last four years anyway, I think in a lot better position than we were. And so it's really a matter of identifying which are, you know, which, in addition to the town hall, which will be our, our, our biggest needs, and how we're going to proceed forward with it. I think water safety and water quality is definitely something we need to focus on as well. Meetings and events, I just want to, you guys have discussed a few of these previous, but the additional elements, it's, you know, a meeting coming up with stormwater on the 28th here this week, which is a question, you know, answer to the session, the general public. And that's here at Town Hall at 7:00. Now, group three, which is similar to the, the group three of additional elements, which is similar to what we have done last week, when we're focusing on group three, that will again be out at Chatham Park until, unless we hear otherwise. So that's at 8:30 a.m. If you guys want to change that, that's what we have scheduled. Opportunity Chatham is something I mentioned last week, that's in previous years taking place out at Barrington. That's put on by the Chatham EDC, that's on October 20th, starts at 7:30 a.m. I've reserved a table. I have a limited number of seats at that table. So if you could, let me know as soon as possible if you plan to attend, and I'll make sure that you've got a nice name card to go with it, and guaranteed, a guaranteed seat. So again, if you can, I'll be bugging you the next couple of days if I don't hear from you.
I'd like to, I'd like to.
Okay. Chatham County Fair, we mentioned earlier, starts September 28th. Also, of course, I have a meeting at 7:00, but I think the introduction with all the dignitaries happens at 5:00. Should be up there. And then, believe it or not, it's coming up on us, 2017 Street Fair, October 28th. So we've had, we've had plenty of planning to make going into that at this point, of course, with the town owning, the town, the town owning 50 West Salisbury Street this year, that kind of changes where we do things like, you know, the beverage tents and things like that. So it's changed a little bit around, but one thing that hasn't changed is that it keeps getting bigger every year, and knock on wood, the weather is better every year. So I'm usually out in time to watch a football game, I do. Other items, electric vehicle charging stations have started working, circling with back with Duke and the vendor on some pricing information. We have, we have one vendor, as I indicated, I think maybe in the previous meeting, we had one vendor that submitted bids for the four different stations. A lot of the stations actually is for, is for some county property, which maybe is an opportunity in and of itself, and it's for discussion that can take place with the county, though it has to be cleared with Duke. The pricing that we got was above what Duke is granting to us. So, so we'll find out if there's possibility for more funding. It's my understanding, and I think Commissioner Hobbs is right as well, that they really kind of have, I don't want to say they have trouble spending the money, but they, you know, that may be an opportunity there with some money that could be available. So there, you know, couldn't hurt to ask. So we may be able to get everything in, but there's a little bit of work that I'll, that I'll be doing this week on that. So I mentioned previously, Chatham County RFQ for the government annex and all of that, they believe finalized and consulted. And we'll be scheduled on the meeting for the committee on that, and I'll be participating in that. And then also too, something that may, that kind of came and went, happened before I even get a chance to tell folks about it, there was some storm drain, well, some storm, yeah, some storm drain work on Salisbury at 8:07. There was, previously, there, we, the property owner in the area, one of the property owners in the area experienced a bit of flooding, pretty heavy rain events, went through, inverted one of the pipes, repaired everything. Now we're just kind of waiting for a terrain to see if it'll work, but I think, Fred, it seems to have, seems to have been buttoned up pretty well, and
Almost.
Almost done, as far as the button goes. And then you can see there in the picture there, the cap going on, the new, new water tower and outside water system improvements, which hopefully I'll get an opportunity to climb one of these days. With that, I
Do you want to climb the water tower?
I've climbed, I haven't climbed this far in town, but every, the few other places I've worked, I've climbed the water tower legally, I believe. With harness, once they find a harness that's large enough, harness, do it safely, and yeah, it's
Sounds like a good challenge for the board.
All right, then, well, unless people have questions, then find Brusbeck on his update. Will Commissioner concern? Head down. I don't really just do what we can, other than put the Hearn's on that road, and also, I know that off the Chapel Road there, those, those lines have been in there, where Chief Griffin lives on there, and it also comes in around, and I can't think the name of that street, it comes off the
Woodbury Forest.
Yes. Those, those lines are considerably smaller.
Yeah, those are the two areas that, that I've, that I've known of since I've been here, and I don't know if there are any others.
You got it.
Yeah. Right, uh, yeah, Bitem and then Bitem and then the one that's out in town, which is an old, old system, I think, a better size as well.
Isn't this the type of thing that the water assessment inventory program will address or identify and qualify? So we've got a screen now of the entire system, to know where those two lines are. You know, we've got a piece of pipe in the back of the room there that shows how it's circulated, these pipes are.
I think that on the House Chapel, right? Yeah.
Is it necessary for us to wait for the data collection?
No, not at all. We know, we've got the date already.
Turn Road and further Woodbury Forest, would Mr. Brusbeck, would you be able to present a, a plan?
Well
Or the plan for developing?
Yeah, we can come up with some, yeah, we can come up, definitely come up with some ideas for it. I won't have an engineer plan in the next, you know, couple of weeks.
But, yeah. We can begin to take some steps and put that on the calendar?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
That'd be great.
I think that would be great as soon as possible.
I appreciate that.
I don't have anything particular other than just to reiterate the information about the rental property, and perhaps we can look at that one in Silver City, and look at what Chatham County has, and also Pittsburgh has, and maybe do a revision and put that in place also as soon as we can possibly get that going.
Some kind of policy for that?
Yes.
I agree, it's worth that.
Yeah. And again, I just want to make clear the conversation, I had a good conversation, I thought, with, with Ms. Horn on it. And, you know, and we aren't saying anything that we probably don't already know, I mean, we're just not currently equipped to do that type of inspection. And we have an ordinance that frankly took a few of us by surprise, and it's pretty old. And when it was passed, we're not really sure what we were thinking when we passed it, because we had no way of actually inspecting it. But as Commissioner Fioco indicated, the county may be in the best position to do that. The county also has to do some replanning in order to make that happen, even outside of whatever agreement that we would have to enact. So, yeah, I think, I think there's more work to be done on that front.
I do have significant concern that I want to share, and our last meeting two weeks ago, frankly, was so busy, we had so much on the plate, frankly, that I decided not to bring it up then. But we've been expeditious tonight, and I want to ask this board if others have heard concerns from constituents or outside the community, greater Chatham area, regarding the proposed rate hike from Duke Energy. So it's approximately 15% of residential rate hike, which Duke's proposal in itself estimates some monthly amount that they estimate it would mean to an average household. And that amounts to more than $200 per year increased cost of electricity, and per average residential year customer. And as much as we've heard recently fiscal concerns, financial concerns for the community, and as much as I know so many people in our community live fairly marginal existences, that $200 a year is really going to impact them. And I have heard from members of the community, and I have my own concerns about it, because of my work, being privileged to be somewhat aware of electricity in the industry. A good chunk of the rationale for this rate increase is for tending to the costs of their, I will say, their responsibility on the cleanup of the coal ash. And I will say that, using that language, because I know for a fact that they knew in South Carolina, there was a better way to do it, and they went to an agreement years ago with the state of South Carolina to manage their ash differently. And they chose willingly, their administration, their management, knew there was a better way to do it, and they did not do that here in South Carolina. They left the accident happen, so they let the ash continue to build up. And so I feel pretty strongly about this, and I don't think that ratepayers should be bearing the whole cost of that particular problem as well. There were costs incurred for the development of a nuclear power plant that they've since decided not to build. I think that's debatable, the cost, but I, I feel like the debate is very strong on my side, that the coal ash loss should not be borne 100% by ratepayers. Now, there are some good things they're proposing to do with this particular rate increase, and which, by the way, another reason I'm bringing it up tonight is that tonight is the only heat market regional hearing for these rate increases at the Utilities Commission tonight. So we had a conflict, I was not able to be there and address these concerns, but the good of it is that they are intending to, that they've asked for funds to invest in grid strengthening and grid modernization. And this would be things like, in certain high-risk areas where they know they've had lines come down because of trees, they're going to bury the lines. They'll actually put it underground and make it safe. Or they're increasing the capacity of the lines so that as more and more customers are pulling electricity on all those lines, they won't burn up, lines won't burn up, for very good reasons, for grid modernization. Another one is to enable, such as the solar installation that Chatham Park investors are accommodating, solar farms to be built throughout the state. We have to have a means to get that electricity, get that juice onto the grid and distribute it out to the customers. There are good reasons for additional rate increases, but for a 15, nearly 15% increase on residential rates, I just don't think that it's appropriate. I think it's beyond the pale, frankly, that they're asking for that much. And I'm interested in asking this board if there's any similar concerns, if anyone else shares concerns, I would be willing to draft some statement from this board regarding our fiscal concerns or financial concerns, that the largest electric monopoly in this region be similarly fiscally responsible. Any thoughts?
Now, is that 15% across the board? You, you seem to have said residential customers, but is it across the board, anyone using electricity?
The industrial and commercial rate increases, there's a whole lot of different categories, but broadly speaking, those are much lower. I think they're 11% average commercial and industrial rate increases. So the residential rate increase is 14.9%.
I remember that at the time of the coal ash disaster, that they promised that ratepayers would not be paying
I did.
If you're, if you're voting for resolution, it would be really difficult for a lot of people.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I'll draft the resolution with Ms. Loise's assistance. Anyone else who'd like to contribute?
Motion made by Pamela.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Michael.
Thank you for your support for your hearing.
Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chris, Chris, thank you. At this time, we're going to be going into closed session pursuant to GS 143-31811. And we appreciate the audience being with us. Is there a motion to go more in session? Move by Beth Wilson Foley, second by Michael Fioco. And then, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.